Today is July 15th, it is now 10:01. Call to order, Mr. Eldon Callen.
Here.
Mr. Ed Hawkins.
Here.
And Mr. Tom Blum's here. At this time, we'll realize for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag and also consider our thoughts and prayers with those individuals in the flooding down the southern part of the state. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, consent and approvals from our county administrator.
Okay, we have 14 exonerations, $14,468.17 for tax year 2015, and there are also corrections on existing tickets. Fiduciary orders as of July 15 and the second quarterly report of fiduciary commissioner Armstead, minutes of July 1 and July 8. Vouchers, general county fund, $543,973.72. General county fund purchasing card, $25,759.76. Coal severance fund, $18,767.24. Camp Muffley, $22,020.49. Camp Muffley purchasing card, $971.25. Justin Ridge Park, $3,0213.80. Justin Ridge Park purchasing card, $560.16. Mason Dixon Park, $115.39. Mason Dixon Park purchasing card, $169.19. Assessor's valuation fund, $4,490.35. Assessor's valuation purchasing card, $1,008.35.43. Metairie Court Fund, $278.12. 911 purchasing card, $202.17. 911 cash, $1,0717.09. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $4,727.49. A total of $628,801.65.
It was a pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay, comments from the public, if we have anyone who'd like to get up and speak, please stand up, read, and give your name and address and we'll go from there. Anyone who wants to? I know, I'm glad you finally awoke. So, yeah, again, I guess things are going so well, I'm glad to see that there isn't anyone, I think it's, a lot has to do also because of West TV and showing our films so people are able to see everything. Okay, we'll do that next. Okay, I'll close it, since there is no public comment, we will go from there. At this time, we have a new employee, Tammy Ranzelli from CASA has something to tell us and introduce us.
Good morning, Mr. Blum.
Good morning.
Good morning, county commissioner, Mr. Blum. I'm Tammy Ranzelli of CASA from Monongahia County and also Preston County. I'm here this morning to introduce Joan Looney, who we would like to present as our new volunteer coordinator for Preston County, have her approved, she'll be serving Preston County. We are funded through United Way and also the county commission. I spoke briefly this morning with Mr. Blum to discuss the possibilities of having the county commission and Mr. Blum helped spread the word of our mission here in Morgantown and Preston County to get the PR out about our mission and what we need to do to enhance our volunteer recruitment for CASA. And Mr. Blum and I have decided we will sit down in the near future and see what we can do to involve Morgantown a little bit more and the entire Morgantown, Monongahia area.
Good, well, first, let's have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joan, welcome.
Thank you.
And the second part is when I sit down, if it's all right with the commission, then I will come back to you all and see what ideas we've come up with, but I think all three of us realize the importance of CASA and with the school year beginning, I believe we need, I believe people just do not understand it and what you all do and we really need you and the service you provide for not only mine county but Preston County. So, I think, you know, any suggestions would be more than what they take, but we'll meet probably the next week or two and do that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're so kind, thank you.
And also Tammy also pointed out that I was the guidance council for her a couple years ago. Couple of years ago. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Renetta will now tell us about all the thousands and millions of dollars of grants we're gonna get.
Such expectations. We just have some reimbursement requests for you today.
Okay.
We have the, for the Governor's Highway Safety Program, alcohol transfer funds, the amount of $3,469, I'm sorry, $4,000?
Should I get?
Okay, $3,469.69, okay. We also have the DUI grant, also for the month of June 2015, $16,9259. And then we have some items that are also related to the Governor's Highway Safety Program, items of no activity for the month of June, click at our ticket, the strength of driving, safe communities, and traffic safety data.
Okay, and how is?
I've got more.
Oh, you got more, wow, that's good.
Day Report Center for the month of June, $17,507.90. And the, to close out the emergency solutions grant, we have one remaining request for connecting link, $5,756.81 for the month of June. That's all I have.
Okay.
Motion to approve the reimbursements.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for doing this. I had a blue pen?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have Captain Mark Ralston, who is going to talk with us about some modifications in the tow policy.
I don't.
She shouldn't be married.
Do you have?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, yes, go ahead, I am sorry.
The letter that Tammy sent to the commission at the end of last week, what this is for is just to let the commission know that all the inspections have been conducted to the towing agencies that wish to be on the county commission's list. That first paragraph and the ones that those companies listed, they were approved and met the commission's policy for inclusion on the rotation list. There are four in the second paragraph, Morgantown Towing, University Towing, Westover Towing, and Midnight Towing, that they were actually second companies that did not meet the requirements of the commission's policy and didn't actually have a separate standalone business. And they pretty much opted to not be included on that list as opposed to trying to come up with the separate facilities in order to do that. The inspections went well, I would also like the commission to know that Tammy did all the legwork for this, prepared the policy.
Not surprised, Mark.
And, and did a very nice job with this. We now have updated drivers' information, updated business licenses, insurance information, and vehicles for everybody on the list, which is probably a first. So, we are more current now than we've ever been. So, with the commission's approval, we'd like to put this into effect.
And one on this list I haven't heard of was McDaniels.
McDaniels, they're on Grafton Road.
Grafton Road.
Yeah.
They've been around for a while, I guess.
Never heard of them.
Haven't?
Yes. It's a small operation, but.
Glad I haven't had to use them.
Because all the rest I'm familiar with.
Yeah.
So, you want us to approve this list as being acceptable for the countywide rotation?
Yes.
Okay, I would move that we approve the list submitted and recognize the good work that Captain Ralston, Tammy, and the sheriff's department has done.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Good, this will go into effect, and thank you very much. I think this will resolve some of the major issues and then if there's some other problems, come back.
Yeah, I mean, it's been.
Let's see how it works.
We hope it will.
It's like anything, when you're dealing with a lot of different people and a lot of different issues, there is no quick, short answer. It's taken us a while, but we've worked at it deliberately. Tammy White and Mark Ralston's been in the forefront of this, and we've worked, we've had a number of meetings on it, it worked out nicely.
Yeah, and please pass on that we're appreciative of the towing companies that were willing to work with us, come up with a solution, and I think they're supposed to be commended too, because they also helped with us resolving this issue.
Yeah, Mike Wolf is aware that we were coming today and once everything was approved is ready to put this into motion, so.
Great, Mr. Fant, more good news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will hold off on Tom Ammon, considering that he's not here, and I will hold off. Oh, I apologize, yeah, except, oh, that's perfect, Tom, yeah, I didn't even see that, thank you. Except proposals from appraisers.
Actually, we only have one.
Except proposal from appraiser.
And this is from Chico Appraisal Services for Cavenry.
Okay.
This is just the qualifications that you'll look at, decide if you want to go with them or re-advertise, but this was in the paper twice.
It was me, I did the last one.
Go ahead.
I'll open it, then we can move on.
Yeah, that's fine with me. We've tried twice. This must be good.
Those need to go, definitely, that's why I separated them. These are about.
There is no price included in that.
Right, that's just qualifications.
Okay, they got that letter of interest, statement of the four buildings, references, their curriculum vitae. They only made a second copy of the same thing. See, they made four. There's multiple, right, there are multiple copies of the four things, let's see if there's something else. Yeah, they're just multiple copies of the same thing I just read off, which is complete. They have both references, letter of interest, references, and their background and experience. So, I don't know if there's anything that needs to be analyzed here by anyone, do you? You or Bobby, see any reason to analyze this?
No, they were, it was advertised twice, and we actually sent notices to all of the local appraisers in the area, including Marion County.
I would move that we accept Chico Appraisal Services for this project.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes? Okay, sorry about that. Again, we're still a little early, so if we could go to correspondence, letter from State Tax Department regarding TIF funds.
This is from Aura Ash stating they've received a revised certificate of value from the assessor's office. The changes resulted in an increase in your tax increment financing values. These changes will increase the amount of funding going toward your TIF and reduce the amount available for allocation in your general fund. We've calculated this decrease in your general fund budget to $15,773, and he's suggesting this adjustment be made when we do our first budget revisions for 2015, '16. The general fund buy that much.
$15,000, okay.
We can do this when we have the carryovers, which should be, they need to be into state by the end of July, so our next, I think our last meeting might be the 27th or the 29th?
24th?
29th.
No, excuse me, 29th. 29th, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that on 29th. Letter from Star City Mayor and Council regarding the Star City TIF, which we requested that letter.
Yes, the mayor was in last week, we discussed the TIF and the regulations, what they needed to do to proceed in the proper manner, asked him to put that in a letter, which he did, and it's been signed by the mayor and council members.
Okay, I, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, he addressed all our concerns, and therefore I move we'd approve the bid and the project.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you just call him, just tell him thank you very much for doing that, I think it just resolves, it just clarifies an issue, so it's on record.
Straightens out an issue, so it isn't done again.
So, we're not in court.
Didn't become a problem, that's right.
Do you have any other correspondence?
I did receive, this was hand-delivered by Mr. Chuck Sell on Monday, it's a petition asking for the removal of executors in an estate that's been opened since, I believe, 2008. This shouldn't have been delivered here, it should have been taken to the county clerk's.
Goes to the clerk first.
Yes, to be properly processed, so.
So, just on record, we're saying that we're all in agreement, we'll just send it to the county clerk.
We can just transfer it to the county clerk, await their recommendation.
Any other correspondence?
No.
I did wanna say some positives, in the Parade Magazine on July 5, 2015, someone sent this to me from Pittsburgh, and it's called Ballparks We Love, all those stadiums getting new life, and one they mentioned is Monongahia County Ballpark, Granville, West Virginia Blackbys, all the minor leagues unveiled their new parks and the nicest and best parks. So, it's a nice little plug about us and our park, and I thought that was great to see that in a national magazine. Okay, unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business? I have a couple of issues I'd like to bring up that I, I was not here when I heard that there was discussion about the plan for moving, moving into the new building, and I guess one of the questions that I got a little confused was, I believe that the county clerk, was it, came up, Jean Friend?
Circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk came up and mentioned some ideas of what she would like to do about how to do the process, and I guess my question is, now that I see the sheriff here, I'm glad you're here, I have some questions or concerns of procedure of how does funding work? Does it regular, is it overtime, and also, what is the possibility? Well, let me ask that first, can that one department do it over another department? That was the first question I wanted to know, how does that work?
Yes, and I did talk to Tanya in payroll, because I know we were discussing, I had some questions as well about how it's gonna work. She said it would be no problem, that yes, they could be paid through Jean's budget, it would be at an overtime rate, and any benefits associated with how many hours they work and what they get paid for doing those duties that she would like for them to do, then that also would come out of her budget. So, what she needs to know is that whatever she pays in overtime for those three employees to help her in her office, if that remains the plan, then she also has to know there's benefits that will have to be paid out of the budget to them. It's simply, the way Tanya explained it to me, it's simply keying it in correctly so we make sure that that amount of money comes out of her budget.
One of the questions I was wondering about is, cost-wise, first of all, and again, I wasn't there, so I don't know, I just have a concern that, I don't wanna make this an open-ended check to allow departments, and again, you know, to move into, you know, just how we're gonna pay for this. One of the questions, and again, that's such a big department and only three people, that's a lot to put on three people, and also, what would be the possibility of using the part-time, where you could have the part-time and not pay the overtime people, and you would have a lot more staff, that's one of the ideas I wanted to throw out, and the other one to the county commissioners, what I'd like to throw out is, as you know, the three of us, since, I guess, January, have asked for a plan of how this move was gonna take place. I would like to see a plan within the next week of how this is going to be done and also the cost factor, and if it's gonna cost us, you know, anything that we're gonna need to do, my question and concern is, we've not gotten anything back, is that correct, about several requests, we have sent letters about plans from each office of how they were moving? And my concern is, we're looking, in the next, it's moving very quickly, and I would like to see how they were planning to do it and see what they were planning to do during the, school time, during the work time and also off time, and we have requested that before, and I was wondering what the other commissioners felt about an actual plan and a cost factor, and I'd like to just discuss that, I'm throwing it out as an idea, because we've not heard from them, and I believe we need it to know quickly.
Well, it wasn't writing, but in all fairness to Madam Clerk Jean Friend, she sort of outlined a plan for us, and that is, that she's got to clean up the boxes here and go through them, figure out what needs to go down, and then take those first. At that meeting, it was pending another meeting about the filings, that's my recollection of it. If Ed has a different one, I'll be.
Yep, that's correct.
So, the issue was, how do you take all these files and filing cabinets and box them up, and what do you do with them to then move the filing cabinet? So, I think the answer was, go ahead, Bobby, you have the answer.
We paid $120,000 to have the files put down there so they could move their files, we don't have to move no file cabinets.
Okay, so that was, that was what we were waiting, what, it was all pending on. In terms of having a cap, and I'm just addressing the circuit clerk, we haven't got any information from any of the others. In terms of having a cap, my understanding was that she would operate and pay this out of her budget until a point where it exceeds her budget, and then she would come up and justify the increase. I want to emphasize, and I understand that it's good to have a plan and have a number, the cap to me is what's in her budget.
Yes.
And then we figure out another cap based on what's left after she gets the first part done. Jean is a very frugal person, I'm not the least bit concerned about her running up a huge tab, and I still understand your request for a cap, but I think that we believed, and Ed, you can speak for yourself, but I believe that Ed and I believed in that discussion that the first step was to figure out how much it's gonna cost and what she can get done out of her own budget. Then she'd come back and say, well, I need this number of dollars, and that would create the cap, that's the way I understood it, Ed.
Yes, that's correct.
My only question is that, I understand that it isn't just her department, because it's, she's several departments moving.
It's the largest department.
Yeah, it's several departments, and my question is, if we had a plan, I believe it'd be advantageous for us to have an idea of, you know, when this is gonna be done, I mean, I guess, say if you have eight workers, are six gonna be working and two are gonna be?
No, I agree with you, with the rest of the departments, I wanted to be fair to Madam Clerk Friend.
Okay.
That's who I wanted to be fair with, because she did come up here with a plan, she did talk about what she's gonna do, she has figured out, maybe she hasn't submitted a formal written document, but I'm not a big one to write everything down, some people are, I'm not, I mean, I felt she had a plan and a direction. Now, as per the other departments, I agree with you entirely, I'm totally there.
So, how do we wanna?
It would be helpful to redirect a request.
That would be great.
To the other departments and say, we know that we have may suffered some delay, but a move is inevitable, and a plan to have a move should be pursued.
Okay, and that's what I think all I'm trying to get across, that we make sure that, you know, because I'm just concerned, we wait till the last minute and we find out that, you know, we're not able to move.
I just didn't want, I didn't want Jean to feel that somehow she was being targeted for not doing everything, because I think she did.
Right, okay, well, that's what I was trying, so then basically, we're in a general agreement that just reissue a letter saying that we'd just like a general concept and idea and plan of, in the next week, of how they are planning to, from now until when the move-in date is, which is, appears to be at the end of September, what their plan is so we can get this going, and do they need to coordinate anything with OJ White, or how's that gonna work? Okay, so coordinated through.
We need to also put in this letter, which is a good point, and that is, that are, will the cost, will they be able to cover the cost of this move within their own budget, or are they looking for additional funds? They need to let us know now upfront.
Yes.
If they, if they don't let us know now upfront, we're gonna assume they're gonna do it in their own budget, they're not getting any more money.
Correct. Good job.
Just an avenue I thought of, and I don't know if it's been pursued yet, maybe it has, and the answer's no, but I know since the Supreme Court dictates a lot to the circuit court, circuit courts office, business hours, and things like that, is there money maybe available through the Supreme Court that would help offset some of the expenses of the move for at least those offices?
That's something that Selins is supposed to be working on, on a continual basis, getting any money we can. Bobby, do you know if there's any actual move money from the Supreme Court?
Money that they would help pay.
To help pay in a move?
We're gonna get reimbursed on down the road for some stuff that was put in this building from the Supreme Court, and, I mean, there's not a definite number yet, but they are reimbursing us for some of the construction that happened here.
I understand that, but he's asking, do they have another pot of funds to help relocate a clerk?
They're moving, they're moving the, I guess, the family court 100%.
Okay. So, they're paying for everything on the family court?
Okay, and then they said that they would help if they come to move the magistrate. Now, what I'm listening to here, I've already dealt with, it's allied, OJ White.
Oh, I didn't know.
Or Legion, I think it's called, that's one of them, but anyway, I just talked to Joe and I walked out there, we're looking at somewhere around $250 an hour for a move, because they have so many people and everything, and we're looking to do all this move in one week, and I put this together to where we were gonna move the judges, the prosecutor, and the circuit clerk first, and then we were gonna go across the street to the magistrate court, and I built all this in, I mean, we.
So, you have a plan, pretty much.
I have an estimated of $10,000 to $15,000, what it's gonna cost to move. As of packing their boxes, we box the boxes and give it to them, we're supposed to be packing the boxes as, this was two months ago, and I've delivered some extra boxes to one office so far. So, that's the plan that I put into effect, and this was three months ago, and if we are looking at each office to try to pay for the move, it's gonna be really hard for me to go back and deal with what I've already put together, because all I've been doing is moving the move date right now, until we can find out exactly, so they're holding whenever I'm ready to go. I got, you know, like, six guys and however many trucks I need for a week.
So, you've already been working with the departments?
Not to, well, we've already talked to everybody the very first time, and then they, I thought that what Tom said, they were supposed to give something in writing on how it was, but this is what I've been doing throughout to make this try to go so smooth for everybody, that's why we put the filing cabinets down there when I talked with the circuit court.
Right, yeah, that's what we were paying.
Yeah, Bob, my concern is that you have everything in place, we have the money that we've allocated for the move, and the boxes aren't done. That is what, and I'm starting to get a little concerned, because I'm hoping that they're starting the process of doing that. My concern is not that the company isn't gonna be here ready to go, it's that the company's gonna come and all the boxes aren't ready to go, that is my concern, and that's why I'm trying to get a plan, so they start now, because if we wait till the last week, it's not gonna happen.
Everybody that I've talked to said they boxed just about everything. Everybody that I've talked to said they boxed just about everything that they could at this time that they didn't need to work with.
Okay.
Until we actually cut a date in stone of when we're going to move. That's what they said the main problem is because I, I keep moving it because of the problems that we're having and coming up with. And that's just what I've heard so far.
Are we able to announce that date since we are going to discuss that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We really need to.
I thought we were going, okay.
We're really doing, and that's why I asked the, the two IT people to come in and we can sit down and see if we can get a plan together and then maybe we can.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's.
Okay, I was under the assumption that we were, I thought we were, I was told we were doing it today, so that's fine, I'm glad you told me ahead of time.
That's why I had, I talked to Diane to, because the email she sent out, so everybody knows, it said that that was a tentative date in capital letters. And I've had three phone calls yesterday and an email from Fletchak and Supreme Court saying, so we're moving on the 28th. And that was stated in there so clear that that was a tentative date and we would send something back as a follow-up. So I just want to make sure that everybody who sees this telecast or maybe Ben can put it in a newspaper or whatever, to make sure everybody knows that we don't have a date cut in stone yet because I, I really don't want to move into a building that's not 100% ready.
Right, we can't do that. My, my concern right now is, we sent, request these letters and I don't want, want these letters to be a confusion and create more confusion and more upset and more, well, what are we doing, how are we doing? But, you know, it seems, it seems to me like you've already got a plan worked out and you've been working with these departments on, on that.
I will touch bases with each one of them and I will have a report next week.
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Okay, that's fine, yeah, I look forward to having our meeting.
Yeah, let him give us a complete report of where they're at. And then, then we'll know what further we need to ask. I'm just fearful that.
Right, that would be more confusion.
Right.
I thought, I thought everything was done, that was, you know, this, yeah, I'll wait till after this meeting.
The biggest question is the overtime that only one office has requested and how that's being paid and how much it's going to cost.
Yeah.
I mean, are you using the higher-paid court security officers or are you using the part-time people that aren't making as much?
And I would rather see the.
Well, I, I would, I would rather that too, but I don't know how we could force her to hire someone that she doesn't, when she wants to hire someone else. I mean, and, and she's paying it out of her budget, then she's going to come to us for anything in excess, which I'm sure she's going to have to, she's paying the higher-paid people. Sheriff, you had something to add to that?
One thing comes to mind when we talk about part-time folks, yes, remember also, most of those part-time folks are retired from somewhere else. So are they going to be the ones that are going to be able to lift and tow?
I mean, that's what you're being prepared for, to do the lifting.
Are they going to be the ones that are going to be able to do that on a, on a regular basis? So I think that's why she was looking at probably, and I don't know who they are, I haven't heard any names yet. She's probably looking at some of the younger folks that, that can do that on a continuing, continued basis.
I'm sure Perry told you, but are, are motion include the proviso that she works out the situation, works out the whole problem with you?
Right. Yeah, and I would appreciate that, at least I'll know.
Right, you'll know what's going on.
Working on what hours.
But that, but that was part of the motion to grant her to allow, allow her to do that. Was that she worked out all the details.
Is that, is that meeting this afternoon, Bobby?
Right after this, we're going to have a staff.
Before you go to your.
Oh, okay, got you, thank you. Okay, I'll hold off on new business if there's.
Tom, too.
Yeah, Tom, as, we can go now back to item number eight. Consider adoption by the commission an amendment to the reimbursement resolution which was previously adopted by the county commissioner of project plan number one. Come on down, how are you doing today?
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Good.
Good.
I then instructed to move the microphone a little closer to me.
Okay.
Trying to do that.
Your sound's bad.
Yes.
So this, you might remember that we had a reimbursement resolution in place for the property TIF bonds at University Town Center. The county commission issued approximately four and a half million dollars of bonds for the infrastructure portion of the project. So that's the road extension, water and sewer work over in the east side, the existing development area. Those bonds were placed with the developer. It was primarily set up as a means of reimbursement to the developer for costs that they were going to incur to complete that construction work. That construction work is ongoing and the funding that's currently available from the bonds is not sufficient to pay all those costs. The developer is going to go ahead and move forward with their own private funds to complete the work, pay for those costs. But they would like to have the ability that if the commission issues additional property tax bonds with respect to the project, to have the ability to reimburse themselves for those additional costs. The existing reimbursement resolution, you have to name in there the sources of funding that they're going to use to pay those costs. And those funding sources have changed for them. So that's one reason we need to amend the resolution to name their other sources of funding that they could pay these costs from. And then also, the existing resolution provided for 20, a maximum amount of $20 million in property TIF bonds and that's essentially for the whole development. And that's probably not sufficient at this point to cover everything that we're looking at, including the west side. So I am recommending that we amend the existing resolution to name this additional account that they would pay these costs from and to increase the maximum bonding capacity from the $20 million to the $40 million.
Move to approve the resolution that county commission of Monnay County amending its prior declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures made from proceeds of bonds or other obligations.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I've got for you.
That's what we'd like to hear.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure. Thank you very much. We'll just wait a second.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Tom, for coming. Okay. New business, do we have revisions to the coal severance fund, which is not a positive situation?
Yes, unfortunately, the coal severance fund is dwindling year after year. This year, we came in 180,000 short. So I had to take several categories from the coal severance budget, move them into general county fund. Of those, we're moving dog wardens, which was appropriations for N-Snap and animal friends. Mental health, that's Valley, the mental hygiene expenses and mental hygiene association. Other health is Healthrate and fairs and festivals. Those are all being rolled over into general county fund. Then in general county fund, I had to come up with that 80, $180,000 and I had to move money from capital projects, which we will definitely put that back when we know what the carryover is for general county. So I had to take those amounts, fit them into general county budget, so that's what I've done.
Took it off from capital project?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve the, are you ready? Was there anything else?
There was also two, Meals on Wheels was increased because they had come in and talked to you and you'd agreed to give them money. And the Morgantown Pony League, they did not get that $5,000 that they were promised previous fiscal year. So basically you've committed to 15, they only received 10 last year, so I put in $5,000 in there.
Okay.
And that's all of them.
Move to approve the budget adjustments.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes, I thank you, I just wonder what those other counties are going to be doing of how they're going to be able to make up the loss of revenues. I know some of them just aren't able to do it.
They're not.
So we're real fortunate, we're still very fortunate, we're able to come up with the difference at this time. Other new business?
The other item that I have is the application certificate for payment on the Justice Center. Current payment due is $622,648,000. We have a remaining balance on the project of $1,086,442.64 and $879,000 of that is retained, which that they won't get until the project's completely done and accepted.
Need a motion to approve that. Move to approve the payment.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes, do we have any other new business? Okay, if you all don't have any, then we'll go down to reports from elected officials. I see several elected officials here, did anyone like to say anything? Sheriff?
Sessor, look at me first, I guess that means you like me.
You got the gun.
Just one thing real quick, I know that you all know that we're pretty busy in the sheriff's office and stuff, but we got a couple of weeks ago our statistics from 911 and just to let you know, calls for service at the end of, in the fiscal year last year were 32,788 calls. So that's a lot of calls for services, as you well know. But we continue to be busy, those numbers fluctuate very little over the years. Over the last five years, they've stayed about that range, fluctuating from 32,000 to 35,000 calls for service. So just, just wanted you all to know that, that's, that's pretty busy.
Okay, thank you. Sessor?
Wanted to hand something out, Monday, the state was up and they've been doing since April our monitoring, they do each year. And Monday was the exit conference to go over their finding of what was and, as you can see, on the left-hand side there, we actually passed every category. So what they informed me was, I think it's the first time the county's passed there since 2012 years. And we've been able to do that, your mapping part, we passed in October. So your sales ratios at the bottom, which we just passed here a few months ago. Then what they do is they come in and they'll just take samples and do about 50. And they'll go out to the field, view what we have on our records, go match, see if it's correct, incorrect, if we missed anything. Review all the studies that we do, make sure there was some of the sales chasing going on and that accurately what they're supposed to be. So we had that and it's, you know, as you can see, it's a, it's a great turnout, be able to pass everything. So technically, we've passed everything that they've done the monitoring on since October. So in the last nine months, we passed all three major categories. So I'm going to be able to present that and share that here.
Excellent work.
Yes.
Please praise all our credits and stuff, all of us.
Yes, they deserve all the credit.
One question, you're soon to go online with GIS mapping now?
We're still, yeah, we've met with Atlas, they've got some things, we're just working out there and working on the licenses and the server.
Yes.
Is where we're at right now. So I'm hoping within a month that we'll be able to have that. Our online filing for personal property, I think we're close to about 4,000 now that have accessed that. So that's still going well, our satellite weren't on high last Wednesday, it was about 52 that showed up. But that's, that's our first time we're hosting it there, so. And we're, Granville today at 3, so we'll continue to go. Thank you.
Great.
There was one other thing I just needed to add.
One more.
Kelly told me, one more thing, where's Jandy when you need her? The tax bills were mailed out today, we had nearly 90,000 tax tickets mailed out. So those, those are out and hope that everybody starts back.
Thank you. Mayor, did you want to say anything? Okay, reports from. You've been, you've been shut up, right? Reports of county commission, Ed, you want to go first?
I would like to report that we concluded for each camp, younger camp, at a record 155 children attending for each camp last Friday. 132 in the older camp, which was three weeks, I worked that camp, that's why I wasn't present at commission for that particular meeting. And really, fairs are coming up, I hope to see everybody at Wadestown on Tuesday for the first fair parade and then Armon Gay County Fair Parade the week after Monday.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you. I've been at the National Association of Counties. National Association of Counties consists of 3,069 counties, parishes, different states called, different things, parishes, townships, counties, that's how many there are in the United States, 3,069. We had a estimated 4,000 people there. West Virginia was the most, had the most representation there that anyone remembers. We had, we had 40 people participate, had 20, 29 delicate votes on various resolutions. They also had a lot of training opportunities, many that I will report on in the future. I just got back at 10 o'clock last night, I drove down and drove back. But the, the big focus is transportation throughout the United States. Transportation, a major problem throughout the United States. And even in our state, there's some counties, transportation is a, is a major problem and deterrent to economic development, health and safety and so many other factors, as Monnay County is fully aware, that we have transportation issues. We had extensive, and I tried to attend every one of those. There, there's three categories, there's all kind of categories, tracks you can focus on and I'll report in the future. But my, my three tracks that, that I focused on was transportation, workforce, the new workforce, WIA due to all the revisions in that and the responsibilities, which I will be briefing the county commissioners, not only here but throughout the state, on the obligation that is placed on county commissions, commissioners. A lot of commissioners are not aware of this, this new thing where the money that's spent for developing the workforce and labor rests with county commissions. I've represented this commission on workforce, local elected officials. And I was on the investment board, Ed's now on the workforce investment board, but workforce key to working through county commissioners. In terms of federal laws, recognize that county commission is key to developing the workforce. So I'll, I'll give more thorough report on that. And the third category I focused on was economic development and different things that are being done on economic development. An interesting thing I'll bring in some ideas and concepts on is that many of the, many of the counties have chose to go to public-private partnerships. The, the ballpark is a prime example of a public-public partnership. And I can see the possibilities in certain municipalities even, and I'm looking at the mayor of Westover right now, where we could do public-public-private partnerships and where we could work together on tasks. That, I would say, was the overall theme, was that the, the economic problems, the labor force, economic problems, the transportation rests in the counties. And it was funny that the, the secretary of transportation, Randy, Randy Fox, I think his name, first name's Randy. Anyway, Secretary Fox, he was a former mayor of Charlotte and he gave quite a stirring speech on transportation. And one, I don't know if he, in answering some questions, but I thought it was, I thought it was funny, funny line. He, he made the point that, that if, if a lot of the states would get out of the way and let the counties participate more in the federal programs, they thought they'd be more efficient from the federal standpoint because, because the county, in all reality, you got to be truthful about it. The counties is where government is real, it affects every day of life, that's when you really produce. We don't, we're not, we don't get hung up on abortion or gay marriage or any of those policy philosophy things, that's, that's the higher level. We, we determine whether you could get from A to B to work, whether you have a good place to work, where you have a place to take your children to church, to recreation. All those human life things are what counts. to church, to recreation. All those human life things are what counties do. So that's what the, the entire focus of this. And I appreciate the commission sending me to represent this commission. And I will give you much, I'll give you much thorough reports and also be able to give each of you in different areas. There was even an area on various ideas to deal with recycling. But I, with, with all this, I'll also be able to give you links that you'll be able to connect and, and hear what took, took place and, and what the, what our position at NACO is.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Look forward to hearing that. I think that's, that's great to have some outside, so we don't keep reinventing the wheel. Anything else?
Well, one. Nah, I'll deal with it later. I haven't been back long enough and I read the quick thing about the, I'll bring it up later.
Okay, I think it might be one that I might be bringing up. About the dog? No, okay.
Oh, if you're going to bring it up, then I'll address it.
Yes, I was going, go ahead and address it. Okay, I just saw in the paper where there was some question and concern that we were held on them hostage or, I forget the exact words, that a council member from Granville stated. And what I'd like to do with your permission is invite them to come over to the Montague County Dog Pound and take a look at what we do and have them understand that, you know, we're, we're trying to be as fair as possible. We're just, we're making them pay for what the cost is and that I just felt the words were not appropriate. But I'm, I'm more than willing, if the other two want to, if Star City and Granville want to set up, make up their own.
Well, let me, let me, let me go ahead and address this. Being on the road and everything, I thought, well, let me think about it a little bit more because I just saw it.
Yeah, we saw it today.
I was five days behind in the paper, so I don't know what else took place in the paper. Sorry about that. But I saw that and I just shook my head. I mean, we had those intergovernmental meetings and the mayor can attest to that, and we went over this repeatedly. I even prepared an email, which I'd be happy to share with Ben and the other news media here, to explain the situation. We have no power to enforce town ordinances. County ordinances do not exist inside the town. Now, the sheriff, and people point to the sheriff, well, the sheriff is a constitutional officer, it's a different, it's, it's a, the sheriffs of this, in every county are charged to enforce the state law. When the sheriff enforces laws with inside a municipality, they're enforcing the state law. They do not enforce town ordinances. There is no county ordinance on leash laws for the, for us to send someone in a municipality and pick up a dog. We have no legal right and we are actually liable to that owner and could be sued for picking up that dog because we have no jurisdiction. When a town has informed, formed, and adopt a charter, it's approved in the legislature. They accept themselves from county. Now, do we provide services? Yeah, we provide, we provide the circuit clerks, the circuit clerk facilities, we provide the magistrates to, for those laws, we provide the, the assessment process, we do all that. They don't pay for any of that, they don't pay for, for the assessor, we do that. The sheriff, of course, the sheriff, but the sheriff also has the tax department, they collect the taxes instead of, they don't have to collect the taxes. The towns don't pay for any of that. Those are the, those are the obligations of basic government that, that we provide to municipalities free of charge, without charge. Now, do the people pay for it? Yes, they pay for it and pay in their portion of the county taxes. The very, we're not forcing anyone to do anything. They're going to put pressure on us? Hey, forget it, let's just drop it. Now, Westover, we could continue to have it in a governmental agreement with Westover and with Morgantown. Let Star City and Granville go, go do their own thing. Let them spend a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, go do, we, we did, we're doing this as a service. And we're doing it at a fraction of the cost, a fraction of the cost. So to classify this as a ripoff, it, it, it's not only naive, but, but it's sad that you've got to turn into a personal tack into a logical discussion, which we had with all the council, with all the council members and mayors who were in attendance over a period of months. I mean, this has been discussed over a period of months.
Right.
The reality is that when we send our people into a town to enforce an ordinance, we are accepting that that ordinance is constitutional, it is legally and properly enforced. We are taking responsibility for that animal and dealing with one of their citizens under their town ordinance because there is no county ordinances in the town whatsoever, it stops at the town line. We're assuming all the risk of caring for those animals, of protecting those animals, of returning those animals. We accept all the liability and risk, which are insurance, we pay insurance on all that, to cover, to cover anything that may go wrong or is improper. My opinion is, look, you don't have to do us any favors. Don't sign the agreement, we'll be happy to turn it over to you. You spend your seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars a year instead of sixty-eight hundred dollars a year to hire a game warden, to add all these responsibilities to your insurance. We, we worked out a program that was extremely fair and I think extremely generous. And I, I would like the mayor to, to speak to this if he would, and the sheriff as well. Extremely generous and then to be called names and, and attacks on us when we, we, we only charged them for eleven months instead of twelve months. On top of giving them a huge reduce, we only charged for eleven months, we don't charge for twelve months. We've done, but there's no other way to do it without, and I don't care what was done in the past because it was illegal then and lucky the county didn't lose big money then. Without an intergovernmental agreement, our people, we have no jurisdiction to enforce any county ordinance or any city ordinance inside the town. So I came back and I read that in the paper and I was like, what else happened in the last four or five days? So I'm not anxious to go home and read the other four or five papers. But, but I'm trying to be fair, I'm trying to be fair to the towns, I think we've been extremely fair. Our, our people are, are taking a big risk by going in, in the towns anyway, for all the reasons I stated. I want to continue it because I think it's extremely fair, but I'd like to hear if the mayor has anything to add to that.
It's, it's interesting that you said, because you pretty much read my mind of what I was going to say about it if I had the opportunity. You know, when we first approached this, a lot of people, not a lot of people, but a few people, one of a few council people thought that they, they didn't say the word, but felt, you know, it was almost like they were being extorted to, to have a disagreement, but they didn't understand. And that's the problem with everything in life. If you don't have the proper information, you don't get it, you don't know what's going on. So when, when I explained to them about the agreement and how that covered everybody and that, you know, that there were some sire grapes there and obviously from the paper, article in the paper, there's still ours somewhere, but they don't understand the process. They don't understand because a lot of them say, well, they always came and picked our dogs up, they always came and did this and they came and did that. They thought their tax money was actually paying that. I said, well, yeah, you're right in a, in a sense. But these people aren't city employees, they don't, you know, they're coming into our city and doing something. We need an agreement to allow that to happen. And they didn't quite understand that until we, you know, until we talked about it in, in, in that fashion. And, you know, and like Bobby and I have talked about a couple of times, you know, the alternative is just not anything that's feasible for anybody to do. We're going to get our own setup, do our own dogs. I mean, why would we even consider doing something like that? Anybody that, you know, if, if, if a city has enough money to do that, then they're probably not providing better services somewhere else. You know, that's just, that's, that's the way it is. We're satisfied with it, would we prefer not to pay? Well, who wouldn't? But it's a good service and, and, you know, we're, the way you guys have laid it out in agreement and the meetings and, and everything that we've been to it. And I know that people from other cities were at the inter, intergovernmental meetings and it was explained to them. You know, and I'm definitely not the sharpest knife in the world if I got it.
We know that.
Shame on them, thank you, because there are a lot of them, I can tell. But we're, we're happy with it and we, we think it works fine. You know, I had a question a few weeks ago that, that we didn't, they didn't respond to just, you know, because we've got some people that'll just call all the time and say, well, that dog's barking over there. Well, that's our problem, if the dog is barking, if the dog's running loose or something like that, you guys respond to. We have noise, noise ordinances, nuisance ordinances, so we, you know, we've responded to that ourselves. But all in all, it's worked out fine for us, you know. You know, it's, it all goes back to leadership, you know, and every step of the way, even like you said before about the, the federal government, like the, the mayor from somewhere in North Carolina you mentioned, you know, that's, they, they, when you get a federal grant, the state is the administrator. Well, you know, we, we had been waiting for almost a year and a half to offer a notice to proceed on another phase of our sidewalk project. If that was being administered by you guys.
It would have been.
And I'm not, I'm not patting you guys on the back, but I do because you guys do a good job, but you're here. You're not, you're not down in Charleston.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
You're here, you, the county should administer, should, should administrate this money from the federal government. It, it works, it works a whole lot better. You should have county rule, you should, you guys should administer, administer the, the federal grants. The state doesn't have the ability to do it. And, you know, you get, you get put on the bottom of the list for whatever reason, I can name a thousand reasons that, that we've had to wait on a lot of things because, but the biggest problem is they're not there. They don't see what goes on, they don't, you know, they don't quite understand because it's a statewide thing, so that part of it makes no sense either.
And that's the advantage of going to these kind of meetings because you can see the same problems exist in the other forty-nine states. The same exact problems. He was the mayor of Charlotte, Anthony Fox, I remember his name now. He was the mayor of Charlotte, now he's the secretary of transportation, so he's got to see it at most levels. And he was active in NACO, he said, when he was, was, worked for the counties. But he, he sees the most level. And what you just talked about that's happening in real life in Westover was exactly what he's referring to. It should, it should go through the counties, they say, rather than through the state bureaucracy that gets everything balled down and nothing gets done for ages.
If you've got a lack of problem, you don't call the department.
That's been my problem, that's been my problem.
I wasn't going to get it, but it opened the door, so I addressed it.
No, I, I think, and I, and I think we want to get clear that we want to have a symbiotic relationship with the cities. And, and that's really, really important. I also did want to say that I, I also don't think Granville, the new people understand that we have a TIF district there that we have gone on a limb for and Granville is benefiting very well and nicely from that development.
I don't know who said this, it may be somebody new, that hasn't had, they've been to some of the governmental meetings we've had, I, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
Then they probably don't understand the full, the full gist of it.
Exactly, and that's why, you know, I look forward, you know, if they want to call us or if they want to, you know, at our next meeting, we can provide that information too, if that's what we want. But, you know, we're trying to keep a, a positive symbiotic relationship. Speaking of that, I received a phone call from Judge Clodesz who had some questions and suggestions about the county judicial building. And I said I would pass them on to the three of you at a work session. So I did want that public to know that I did receive the phone call and I will talk with you about the suggestions that were brought up. Also, I hand, I just handed you a list and I give to Janet and you all. This is our list in the last, as you know, we've been monitoring, oh, I'm sorry. In the last thirty-six hours since the state had said that they had done ninety percent of the patching of all the primary roads, that these were calls that I've received or from Facebook, you know, in the last forty-eight hours. And with, and I'm planning to, Colleen, I want to thank Colleen for putting in an English of the road and the comment, and just submit to Ray Ursin, the State Department, saying, here are concerns again, we hope that you can look at these and many of these roads are, are the same that you've seen in some, and to be honest with you, I didn't even know existed that there were such names of roads. I kept saying, there's a Hawkins Run Road down there.
Just Hawkins Road.
Yeah, Hawkins Road.
It is run, yes.
And I just liked the comment, the quote was Dominion Post called it undrivable. I just liked that. But there's different comments and suggestions and the one that does concern me immediately that we're adding on is someone called from Route one hundred to Fort Martin Road, poles and lines are fully in the road and starting to fall in and down. And so those are the kind of things that maybe they aren't aware of, so we're going to.
Let's make it clear that I don't live on Hawkins Road.
You don't live on, that's right, you don't live on Hawkins Road.
I live on Eastonville Road and it's not on here.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So again, it was just interesting to see, you know, the different areas and the suggestions and comments. So we'll submit this and hopefully, you know, they'll be able to get to many of these roads. And, you know, I just wanted you to have a list, so if someone calls, you can at least see what the list is. I gave it to Colleen, so in case they call the county commission office, she'll have her list right there to say, yes, it's on the list. But again, I just wanted you aware of it. Besides that, that is, that is it. I know we are going at one thirty to meet with the governor to watch the opening, grand opening of the National Guard Readiness Center. And as you saw, we are able to use the access road for today. So we'll be getting an idea of how that access road's going to be for the future of Montague County. So there's a lot of positive things going, a lot of good things going on there. I can tell you this, there is a meeting tomorrow, which I'm sure you're aware of the.
Three thirty tomorrow.
At, and that's one, but exactly, with the state development authority and the developers and we're going to be there and answer any questions. And I'm, and I think it's a very positive meeting that I think we're, got a lot of movement and hopefully we'll hear by Friday and that's what we'll find out. Anything else? With that being said, I'd like to request a motion to go into executive session under six nine eight dash four, section nine.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. I also request that administrative personnel be in on that. And I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. It passes, we're in executive session right now. Okay, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
To adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're out of here.